Change.
Adequate notice that this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 12, 2023, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato, Mr. Conity, Mr. Armato, Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Polino?
Present.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
And Mrs. Downing?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Okay. Can I have a motion to go until executive?
Motion.
Be resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, and confidential personnel matters. The subject matters of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately 60 minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 p.m. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Is there a second? Oh, second?
Thank you, Kim. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll be back at seven.
Hey, we'd like to resume the meeting of the Lacy School Board. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our student representative, Charlotte. You have a few things today?
Yeah, I'm just going to keep it brief. So, our past SJA meeting was on December 4th, and then we took our pictures on the 11th. And then, about all the classes has been entirely moved in recent events to the February 5th to 9th. And so, next week's Spirit Week is just going to be Monday for Lacy Day, Tuesday for Team or College Gear, Wednesday for Workout, Thursday's going to be Plaid, and Friday's going to be Ugly Sweater. And that's pretty much all I have to share, and our unsung hair will be announced in January.
Thank you, and thanks for coming tonight. We appreciate it. I'll turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Pereira.
All right. Thank you, Board President Downing. Okay, so typically, our board meetings are a time to celebrate the successes of our students and our staff. Tonight, we gather with heavy hearts united by a profound loss that has shaken our community to its core. The tragic passing of three bright souls from our high school, DeShawn Witter, Daniel Watkins, and Jason Cugliari, has left us in a state of deep sorrow and disbelief. The impact of losing these three students is immeasurable. Their absence leaves a void that cannot easily be filled. They were more than just names on a roster, they were friends, classmates, teammates, and individuals with dreams and aspirations that lit up our school. Their presence enriched our lives, and their absence now leaves an indelible mark on our hearts. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. I don't have many comments tonight, Board President Downing, other than this is Mr. Polino's last board meeting. And Frank, I just want to thank you for your years of service to the families and students of our district. And next month, we will welcome Mr. Daniel Bell. And I just want to wish our families a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay, seeing that's that. Public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand. When called upon, state your name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President, one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command. That being said, are there any public comments? Sorry, I'm pointing, but you want to go up to the podium, please?
Hello, I'm Ariana Green. Hi, I'm a junior at Lacy Township High School. I'm here today to speak on the behalf of my peers and myself to report the injustice and consideration and absolute corruption Lacy Township High School has proven throughout a difficult time. Ever since I started here as a freshman, there were incidents that were overlooked and completely dismissed, but this specific topic I refuse to let be swept under the rug. Three enrolled seniors of Lacy Township High School by the names DeShawn Witter, Daniel Watkins, and Jason Cugliari have all died in the span of three months. DeShawn Witter was in Lakewood Township early Saturday on October 7th when the car he was passenger in, which had four other passengers, careened off the roadway and slammed into a metal traffic signal pole, breaking into two parts. DeShawn had a violent and tragic death no one, especially at his age, should have to experience or mourn. Yet, that's what the cards were dealt, and as a result of this death, you should expect scrutiny to go along with it. Unfortunately, the only support shown to us students was a moment of silence during fourth period when the seniors and vocational students were there. No email went to us students in regards to DeShawn, no announcement was given that a student had lost their life, and DeShawn was forgotten before he was even noticed. Daniel Watkins, aged 17, committed suicide on November 26, 2023, at his home. He wasn't just a Lacy student, he was also enrolled in Vocational Technical School, where he had aspirations to follow in his father's footsteps and become a diesel mechanic. I would like to read snippets from a former friend's post about Daniel Watkins. "Dan, my best friend, I love you. One day I asked who you were going to be when you got older. You told me, 'I'm going to be the best person I can.' He wasn't afraid to be himself, Dan was the most selfless and hardworking person I've ever known. If you would ask who I wanted to become, I would have said someone more like you." With that said, the school still made their decision by sending no emails informing Lacy students of another death and no announcement informing Lacy students of this death. What they did decide on was hosting only two days of special counselors which came from the middle school to quote-unquote "support" those going through a difficult time. Why did I quote "support"? Because when me and four other students sat in this very lecture hall, there was no speech or advice or anything for that matter said in that room, just despair. Although Danny might not have had many friends, he was still someone's son and a human being, the cause of his death should have no impact on the school's actions. Jason Lee Cugliari, aged 17, died in a car accident on December 9th, 2023. He was an exceptional student that was recently accepted to Stockton University and the son of a former staff member, John Cugliari. On Monday, December 11th, 2023, the school decided to have a moment of silence for Jason, while apparently including DeShawn and Daniel's name as well. Though being in the gym, second period, there is not one word we heard from that minute announcement. I'm not standing here today to accuse or fight with any staff or board member, though I will stand here today to plead and beg for some form of support and justice. An educator doesn't mean you're up there for a paycheck or yourself, but you're up there for us and our future. It means you are a mentor, a friend, a motivator, a coach, a parental figure, and a counselor. It means you are responsible for inspiring a group of kids to become better people than they were the day before. It means that 1,256 families are counting on you to take care of their most prized possession. Giving your students your very best should be your first consideration, as there's children that woke up today because of you. The Lacy Township Board of Education under policy statement exclaimed, start quote, "Since students learn by example, school administrators, faculty, staff, and volunteers should be commenced for demonstrating appropriate behavior," end quote. So how do you think it makes us students feel when a staff member comes through the drive-through of my job, slurring his words just a day after Jason's death? How do you think it makes us students feel when we're scared to even sit behind our wheel when that's who our role models are? How do you think it makes us students feel when we have to sit behind a desk, listening to teachers who don't care about educating us while all we can think about is Danny stepping off that chair, feeling he had no one who he could reach out to? Multiple students and I have sat down with these said special counselors in hopes of reaching the attention they deserved, yet every response had an excuse. When asked what I want them to do about the situation, I gave them a list of possible appropriate actions just for the response of the school having no money. Mentioning a petition or GoFundMe was only dismissed with another excuse of needing the senior class for the school to realize the impact these deaths have been. When two seniors had asked to have a page in the yearbook for Daniel and DeShawn, they were told they wouldn't be in the yearbook at all due to the assumption that memorializing these deaths will cause more harm than what's already done. Memorializing? No one asked for the school to be shut down or have their faces on the school page. All we asked was that their deaths be noticed and remembered along with who they were before the tragedies. All we ask is for support as we broke down in your offices, hoping to retain that, but instead being told to go back to... To be good... Offices, hoping to retain that, but instead being told to go back to class. We feel they fail to realize the extremes these deaths have taken on us, as being an adult grants you more experience with death and mental interference. Some students have never seen a dead body until they were standing in front of their best friend's casket, forced to look at a soulless figure they no longer recognize. You didn't have to know these students to be hurt, you could have been a friend of the family, a friend of their friends, or even just relating to their situation or knowing someone in their situation that can trigger such emotions. These students have been here since Milpont, but yet the recognition they get is as if they never attended Lacy at all. I'm disappointed my friends have the mindset that, start quote, "The school is not going to do anything, and there's going to be another death. How long until it's one of my friends?" end quote. We are scared, and by the school not speaking out, it creates the question if they even care. I am disappointed with the school, the board, my peers, and myself for letting another student pass without speaking up. Change is possible, and I will never stop speaking about these individuals until they get the recognition they deserve, especially if their stories can inspire another student to keep living. And one more thing I want to say that I didn't include, there were a couple people who couldn't be behind me today that were a little closer to some of these students, and the reason they couldn't attend was solely because they believed the Board of Education wouldn't care about any of this. Is that the kind of leaders you want to be? It's pathetic, and it's embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we make a comment, are there any other comments? Mrs. DeSenz, okay?
Well, let me, Mrs. DeSenz, let me just address before you come up, okay? So first of all, I just want to thank you because I know it's hard to come up here and speak at the podium in front of the Board of Education. I have been speaking with Dr. Purperay, who's the Supervisor of Guidance, and I've noted some of the things that you talked about. And I'm thinking that maybe the next best thing to happen is for us to have a sit-down and talk about what some of your concerns are, because we can't fix what we don't know, okay? So we are aware of some of the requests. I know that Dr. Purperay is working with a group to organize a community event, and I know she was planning on talking about that tomorrow well into next week. To my understanding, there is an event planned for January, February. I just don't have the specifics yet, but we'll talk some more, okay? Because I want to hear what your concerns are. It sounds like you're not the only one, okay? But I want to thank you for making those comments, because I know that that was hard for you to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want, before Mrs. DeSenz, did you want to make a comment, sir? No? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Regina DeSenz, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Yes, it's been a very sad three months here. My own son has brought all that information to my attention, because even he's affected by it, even though he's 24. He remembers kids, he remembers their friends. Tonight, I wanted to remind Ms. Ormsby that back in, I think, 2020, I had donated $2,000 to the Legal Fee Deductible when the four Ethics Cases had commenced. I still think the other five should kick in, at least 500 each, since they all saw a fit to bring the charges that started this expensive mess. Ms. Ormsby, would you happen to have a legal degree or a law license, or just CPA?
Just CPA.
Just CPA. Because I was wondering why you were questioning the details of my lawyer's bills. I saw the emails this past week. The details on that bill are between me and her, and I think you're kind of infringing on my attorney-client privilege. And I think if you have a problem with my legal representation bill, that you should probably come to me first and let me explain. I think you should pay Ms. Weinstein's bill in question instead of asking her. The alternative for her not listening to that meeting could have cost the district a whole lot more money. In fact, it could have caused two more lawsuits, but I chose to take a different route. I just want you to know that. So I think the $300 or $400 that you have in question is practically insignificant, since Mr. Giordano's bills exceeded over $100,000 at the present time, and mine are less than one-third of his costs. So I think it was very nitpicky of you to try and deny Alyssa for listening to that meeting. You do know that board members are obligated to speak the truth from behind the dais, and when things are twisted a little bit, you know, I had my issues with that, and that was why I asked her to watch that meeting, and she didn't think it was appropriate to view just the public comment portion. I know Mr... Jeff. I can't think of his last name. Stark? Is it Jeff Stark?
Jeff.
Jeff feels a little differently, and yes, he may just look at the public comment. You know I've been reading the legal bills. And also, I did ask to see the district legal bills a few weeks ago. I don't remember seeing Ms. Weinstein's in the pile. Did I have to ask for them separately?
You didn't request those, no?
I said all the district legal bills.
You didn't, you actually asked for specific ones?
I did write them down, all right.
Yes.
I would like to see them all at some point. I'll make arrangements with you for that. Okay, so, one of the things that was spewed was that I was doing an appeal, but you know what? Now I have an appeal. I got a docket number this week. Mr. Peters and Mr. Polino might have wanted to write these down. We're seeking to have them consolidated, but the Open Public Meetings Act case has gone to appeal, A-00932-23 and A-00954-23. Because we're pro se applicants, we had to get two separate docket numbers, but we are asking to have them consolidated. And Mr. Padula, I would like to thank you for letting me know that the Subsea Ethics Case was a hot topic during the NJSA Legal Forum. I did manage to get some information from some of the other attorneys that attended that law forum session, but it wasn't a presentation topic, it was just discussed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to Board Committee. So, Kim, would you like to start with policy? Cheryl?
Yes, I'm going to start with your policy. Okay, so this is the minute of the Policy Committee meeting. We had the meeting on Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, for 45:00 p.m. in the Board Office. In attendance was Kim Klaus, myself, Jack Conity, and Dr. Pereira. The discussion, Policy Bylaw 0155, Board Committees. The committee discussed eliminating the Facilities Committee and returning it to the Finance Committee. Discussions followed. Policy Regulation 5320, Immunization. Dr. Pereira provided an overview of Policy 5320 as it relates to exemptions. Discussions followed. Policy Regulation 9180, School Volunteers and Parents Involved in Education, PIE Proposal. Dr. Pereira shared a draft of the PIE proposal, and discussions followed. New Policy Regulations for Review and/or Discussion. Policy 2270, Religion in Schools Revised. The United States Department of Education released an updated guidance on Constitutionally Protected Prayer and Religious Expression in Public Elementary and Secondary Schools, 2023 Guidance, dated May 15th, 2023. The 2023 Guidance replaces the 2022 Guidance dated January 16, 2020. The updates include minor revisions in the titles included in the 23 Guidance. Policy Regulations 3212, Attendance Revised. Policy Regulation 4212, Attendance Revised. Legislation signed on July 3rd, 2023, revising NJSA 18A 31 and NJSA 18A 30-4, Expanded Allowable Uses of Sick Time for School Employees. The provisions in this recent legislation required revisions in Policy and Regulation Guides, 3212 and 4212, that addresses staff attendance. Policy Regulation 5111, Eligibility of Resident/Non-Resident Students Revised. PL 2023-C61 was recently signed into law, revising NJSA 18A 38-3. Policy and Regulation Guides 5111 have been revised to reflect the revisions to NJSA 18A 38-3 in order to avoid redundancy. Policy Guide 5111 has been shortened, mostly referring statute and administrative code sections that are already included in the existing Regulation Guide 5111. Policy Regulation 5116, Education of Homeless Children and Youth Revised. Policy Guide 5116 has been revised to update the term homeless child to homeless child and youth. This term has been updated throughout Policy and Regulation Guide 5116. Co-curricular, no agenda items to discuss. Safety and security, no agenda items to discuss. LTASA, no agenda items to discuss. Other. The committee reviewed the following job descriptions that are on the December Agenda for Approval. PIC, Preschool Instructional Coach. PIRS, Preschool Intervention Referral Specialist. CPIS, Community Parent Intervention Involvement Specialist, Social Worker. Administrators Coaching. The committee discussed the provision in the LTASA contract that outlines whether administrators can serve in co-curricular positions. Discussions followed. That's it. Endearment was 5:30 p.m., and the next meeting is January 10th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Mr. Peters, Facilities?
We spoke about the STEM Room project, had an update on that. The fire alarm project, as everybody knows, parts are tough to get. We spoke about that. The HVAC project we just talked about, some of our supplies are 30 weeks out, but being looked into, because we were told there's a shorter timeframe. Discussion followed. We had a synergistic update, we talked at the referendum, led a discussion on the status of referendum and the committee. We had a pre-K facilities grant talk. That's going to be a December agenda. We talked about emergency lighting that needs to be installed outside the buildings when the students are evacuated outside the building. The fire commissioner, correct?
Yeah, the fire inspector.
Inspector said, "We don't have enough lighting outside, so we have to add lighting outside. God forbid, it's dark out, and they could see, I guess, better out there. I mean, the parking lot's lit, but you know, it's code, so we have to follow it." And that is it. Our meeting was over at 4:44.
Thank you. Finance, I'm going to report on finance tonight, and basically, it's the same things for facilities. Under the STEM, the project is complete. The architect is just doing a final walkthrough, and then the STEM Room will be able to be utilized. The fire alarm project you spoke about, Skip, a punch list was completed and provided to the contractor weeks ago. This is in all schools, the fire alarm project. We talked about the HVAC project as well as... Synergetic, I can't say that. We did that. The referendum, we talked about the referendum committee that the committee will continue under the leadership of a new president, once we reorganize in January. And we talked about the lights. These lights that Mr. Peters was referring to is at Cedar Creek, Forkett River, Lenoka Harbor, and the middle school. And we talked about, Mrs. Ormsby led a discussion... Seems strange to say that. Led a discussion on the need to fund the Capital Reserve account. Nothing else was discussed. Our meeting ended at 5:14. And our next meeting, we don't have a date yet, but we will be re-meeting whoever the committee is in January. Okay, Board Member Comment. Just going to, on behalf of everyone, this entire board sends its condolences to all the families and friends and everyone over these tragedies that have occurred. And also, we want to wish everyone a very merry holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever holiday you're following. Have a wonderful one. And Mr. Polino did not want to have a big to-do when he left. So we just, I'm just going to say, Frank, on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for your, you know, your leadership, and we appreciate everything you've done. And on behalf of all of us, this is a little something for you. You don't have to get up. We're not making a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at that, we'll move on to the regular meeting. Charlotte, do you want to leave? I know, I'm sorry. You don't need to sit here. Thank you.
Ladies, it's up to you guys, we're just going over bills. I mean, if you want to stay, I mean, it's totally up to you to listen. You're more than welcome to stay. It's a public meeting, but...
Thank you.
We know you have homework tonight, and you have things to do.
He's already taken a vote. Okay, we're going to do Item 1 under a new business. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second. I'm going to go find her. Ken, thanks for coming.
So, Page 2, Meeting Minutes, A1, could I have a motion?
Motion, Peters.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Also on Page 2, List of Bills, Item 2, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I'm staying on A2, the OCBTS 211210.
Thank you. And Mrs. Downing?
I'm going to say yes, except for bills number 950927, 955337, 953843, 950450, 955340, and last, 955343.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Are we done? That was the last one, right?
Yes.
Okay. On Page, also Page 2, Number 3, Budget Transfers, could I have a motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Number 4, Page 2 through 7, Finance and Faci...
Right.
Yes. Finance and Facilities. A4 through A1, let me read them, please, for the public. Sale of solar renewable energy credits, SRECs. Acceptance of preschool facilities expansion grant. Purchase of exterior emergency lighting. Receipt of bids and award of contract for electrical or plumbing services. Approval or approval of agreement for private police-related activities. Appointment of special education-related services provider. Sale or disposal of assets, and lastly, use of facilities. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Items 12 through 15, Tuition and Transportation. Out-of-District Tuition Placement, Out-of-District Tuition Placement Revisions, Out-of-District Tuition, and Student Transportation Jointure. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Next one, Items A16 through A18, could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Page 8, Policies and Regulations, Items 19 and 20. Motion, please. I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
I have a question. What was the change in 270, 2270?
Religion in Schools?
Religion in Schools.
Was it just terms?
There was an update. The structure of the policy did not change. I mean, I could look.
Okay, all right, that's good. I'll go with that. Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Page 8, Hib, Items 21 and 22, could I have a motion, please?
Motion, Peters. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
So yes to everything but no on 10506.
10256?
No, 10... No, 10506.
Thank you. Thank you.
105, 106?
10506.
06?
06.
All right. Mrs. Claus?
Yes and no on 10506.
Mr. Polino?
Yes on all but 10506. No on that, please.
Mr. Peters?
Yes on all except 10506.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes, for all except for Number 10506. That's a no. The next item, B, Donations, could I have a motion, please, to accept these generous...
For President, if I may?
Yes.
Can I add a new business?
Yep.
At this time? So I want to add a comment, if I can.
Go ahead.
So my last meeting, I want to thank everybody for their diligent work here on the board. I know at times we disagreed, and sometimes we didn't agree at all, and it got hostile. So for that, I apologize to our backdoor hostilities, but we got things done. But I just want everybody to know that my decisions as board president a year ago in this board, my decisions, I do what's for right, not necessarily what's popular. And for that, I've taken a beating publicly and privately, but I stand behind what I believe in, and people have their own feelings, and I agree with that, but I've always been a man of my word. I say I'm going to do what I'm going to do. And with that, I want to wish all the current board members and the future board members, Dan, luck next year. I know you're having, going to have a tough time with the $4 million deficit, but I know that you guys will fight through it, and just remember, you know, we're a business, children first, and again, do what's right, not necessarily what's popular. So with that, I wish you all luck and thank you for our hard work together. And especially, our staff and administration, what they go through, you know, Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Ormsby, you know, everything you do behind the scenes and the hours after work that you put in, it's tremendous. And the same thing with our administrators in our schools and our staff and our teachers and everybody. You all do a great job, and thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, moving on to B, Donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion Peters.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and on behalf of the entire board, thank you for these donations. C, Programs and Curriculum, Items 1 through 3.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Sorry, excuse me. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.